Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, January 27, 2020 Board of Education meeting. If we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like you owed us down. Okay. At this time, like item three on our agenda, special guests, elected officials on budget planning and legislative priorities. I'd like to welcome our state Senator Derek Slapp and our state Rep. Mike D'Amico to the table.
While they're coming up, I just want to thank Ellen. She bought these for us. And they have our logo on them so we can bring them to our board meetings and save on plastic bottles. And so, thank you so much, Ellen.
Thank you. I was going to tell you in my board chair report.
Oh, sorry.
I ruined the surprise. So, welcome to Derek and Mike. And we do this every year, just to check in, to see what, you know, is going on at the legislature. You're representing us. We know there's issues, you know, school issues that we could be interested in, or maybe you can update on this. I'll turn it over to you both first, if there's anything you wanted to talk about.
Great. Go ahead. I'll shoot you.
Well, honestly, thank you for having us. It's, I always look forward to this every year, and I'm sure Derek does too. I am more interested in listening to the concerns of the Board of Education and the superintendent than I am about making a speech. I'll make a speech if you want, but I think it's more important to hear, you know, what your concerns are and what we can do as a legislature to try to help out and not do any harm. So hopefully, this year, you know, we'll be able to, I mean, we're in the second year of a two-year budget cycle, so you might see some adjustments to the budget, but you don't see any, I don't think you'll see any major changes. So hopefully, we can, we can have a relatively smooth, smooth session. I can think of one or two things that will be controversial, but I'm not sure that they're directly related to education. But Derek might have something to say about that.
All right. I am going to make a speech. No, I'll be brief. First, I want to echo, can I call you Mike?
You can.
I'm just going to echo Mike's comments about what a pleasure it is to meet with all of you. I look forward to it, and a big part of it, the key part of it, is really listening to your priorities. And then certainly, we can give you some context into what we think are going to be some of the big issues related to education at the, at the General Assembly. And session starts, as you know, very, very soon. I would say that, I want to congratulate, by the way, those of you in new leadership roles. Congratulations, all of you who have just been elected to serve. It is such a privilege and honor, and I look forward to working in partnership with you. I think that, you know, after the election, we put the D and the R away, and we just work for, for the common good and to help students in Farmington. So I know that's what we all want, and so I look forward to doing that with you. So that said, I'll just highlight a couple real quick things, and then I'll stop my filibuster and listen to what you all have to say. I think what, if you ask any legislator what their top priority is, it should be helping to really strengthen, first, our economy and, and also our state budget, and helping to create a sustainable state budget, so we don't lurch from one budget crisis to the next, to the next. You all remember very well that we didn't have a budget until Halloween a couple years ago, and we looked at ECS grants that were zeroed out, at least that was the threat, and there was a lot of uncertainty for our students and for our educators. And so, I'm really committed to doing whatever I can to make sure that we're not in that situation again, and to echo Mike's comments about protecting our public schools. And I think partly, that's about, again, a sustainable budget with a strong rainy day fund, because we know a recession is coming, we just don't know when, but we know there will be one, and if we face a multi-billion dollar budget deficit, we don't want public education to be on the chopping block again. So I think that's, that's one thing we need to do. We need to protect Farmington's ECS funding, and we also need to be ready to push back very strongly the next time a plan comes to put the teacher pension liabilities back on to the towns. And that will come up again. Not this session, but I believe it will come up again soon. So that's something I think we all need to, right, be focused on. Our budget right now, as Mike said, it's in the second year of a biennial budget. It's for the most part, holding, you know, so I don't think we're going to see a lot of mid-year recisions. We've come together in the past to push back against ECS cuts. We had a bill that passed both chambers, but was vetoed by the previous governor that would prohibit ECS cuts in the middle of the school year. I would be, you know, interested, and I will be pushing that bill again, but I do think we have kind of bipartisan support for protecting ECS funding, especially during the year, because then you all are, you set your budget, right, and you make certain assumptions, and we don't want our kids to be, to be victimized by that. There's one other thing I'll mention, and that's, there will be a bill this year out of the Education Committee addressing school start times, specifically high school start times. I do not think that this will be, that there will be a statewide mandate passed this year by the legislature that, similar to what California has done recently, that says that no high school can start before, I think they said 8:00 AM, and they, I believe, gave the districts two years to figure out how to do that. I'm not predicting that. I do think, though, that there's going to be more and more attention to looking at what are healthy school start times, especially for our teens. I have a 15-year-old and a seven-year-old, and my 15-year-old would sleep until 2:00 in the afternoon if we didn't wake her up. My seven-year-old is up at 7:00 AM, no matter what. So, and there's been a lot of reports about the health and wellness and all that, and mental health, and anxiety, and depression, and performances, and all that. So I just want to give you all a heads up that I think we're going to be having more discussions about that, and I would be very eager, as these discussions continue, to hear from you all, and the educators, and the parents, about what you think about school start times. So I will leave it at that, and look forward to hearing what you all think. Thanks again for having me.
Any questions for Mike or Derek? Liz?
Thank you for coming. I have a question. It revolves around mental health, so since you brought that up in your last statement, either one of you, I guess. We have an initiative here revolving around social, emotional, learning, social, emotional health, and I think it ties into security, and there's a lot of talk about security and grants and money that goes along with security of buildings and security of schools. Is there any way that you could see tying any kind of grant money for social, emotional learning or mental health into security grants, or, you know, mental awareness that ties in with, you know, security? Because, let's face it, you know, a lot of the things that have to do with things that happen in schools and security breaches do have to do with mental health. So if you catch it at an early age and you deal with social, emotional learning, like we're trying to do, you could tie that in. Has there been any talk about that in any of the committees?
Go ahead. Do you want to answer?
I'll give my usual short answer, then I'll let Derek give a longer answer. I'm not aware that there's been any, much discussion about that, but I think it's a great idea. I think it's, I think it's something that ought to be explored. It all comes down to money, but, you know, every, every year, we talk about how, you know, we need to, we need to, to fund mental health, and then we underfund mental health. So, you know, if enough people like yourself, and if enough districts start demanding that, then that'll probably become part of the discussion. There you are, Senator.
Let me ask you a question. Are you referring to school security grants, that, that program that currently exists? Or I just wanted to make sure I understand your question.
Yes.
Okay.
But I mean, you know, there's only so many things that fall into those grants, and I think that mental health awareness and social, emotional learning, you know, are things that don't fall into that, obviously, but if you're going, you know, you could broaden the security grants to include mental health awareness and social, emotional learning and programs like that, and maybe you could even make the grants larger to include mental health awareness. Because, you know, Connecticut's been on the forefront of a lot of security issues, you know, gun control, things like that, but why not broaden it to include the mental health aspect as well?
Yeah. So I would say that the, the school security grant program that originally was created after Columbine, actually, and then enhanced and reimagined and made even stronger after Sandy Hook, is for bonding, right, for capital improvements, right? So we, I believe, would have a very difficult time getting through the bond agenda, borrowing for operating costs, like enhancing programs and things. That said, I think are very valuable, so I think you raise some great points. I don't know if we'd be able to do that through the bond agenda, right? But I agree with you that, and I think there is more discussion going on in the Education Committee. I serve on the Higher Education Committee. We're talking about it at our institutions of higher ed as well, about mental health and really being at kind of a crisis levels in many of our schools. So I would love to have more of a conversation with, about that with you, and maybe we could identify some ways to do that. So, so thank you. Yeah.
Liz?
Well, I have another question, not about mental health. About the, so as you know, we're in the middle of a building committee.
Really? I heard something.
I know. You might have heard about it. So as the state delegation for Farmington, would you be able to commit to us that, whatever project is chosen, well, let me ask you this. If a project is chosen, you know, what sort of commitment would you be able to give to us that you would fight for the highest reimbursement level possible? And what kind of tools do you have at your disposal to do that for us?
I can take this one and jump in. I am absolutely committed to fighting for the highest reimbursement rate possible for, for a new school, a new high school, for Farmington, absolutely. I've already had conversations with Jonathan Harris, as we all know, an old friend who works in the governor's office, and he knows that that's a priority for me, and I'll say for Mike too. I think I can speak to Mike. So absolutely, you know, we're going to, we're going to fight for that, and I know, you know, Senator Bizarro, who's not here, and Representative Exum, and we've all had discussions, I don't want to speak for them, that wouldn't be appropriate, but, but absolutely, I mean, I think we'd be able to work together as a state delegation. You know, a lot of it is dependent in terms of the reimbursement rate. You've all heard of this, of the debt diet, right? And the governor's office, he's the one who's, that office is, it is their purview right now, unless we change the law, he's the person who gets to decide exclusively what actually gets on the agenda and what actually gets, you know, what, what projects go forward. And right now, he's waiting to find out, because of transportation, right, how much room we're going to have on the state credit card. So I don't want to get too down that rabbit hole, but I would say that whatever we do on transportation is very much tied to, you know, school construction funds and how much bonding, and also, I think, what direction the governor's going to be willing to go. And so, but I'm, I'm ready to fight for what, I'm going to follow your lead as a community and see what you all want, and then we will, we'll, we'll take it to the next level.
I would, I would agree with everything that Derek said. The only thing that I would add is, I know that Kathy and her staff have been working for years, very diligently with, with representatives from, from the state, to try to make sure that, that whatever plan that you come up with for the high school falls within the guidelines, to make sure that you get the maximum reimbursement. So I'm not going to get in the middle of that. I'm sure that you and your staff will make sure that, that we qualify for, you know, the highest level of reimbursement that we could possibly get, and then, you know, then it's politics, you know, and then it's making sure that the governor, you know, you know, honors our long commitment as a state, you know, to, to school construction. I have no reason to think that that wouldn't happen. As a matter of fact, and I think I said this last year, when we were sitting at the, the high school library, talking about this, you know, the, the people in this state, you know, every town needs school construction at some point, you know, maybe not this year, but, you know, high school, middle school, elementary schools. So, you know, I can't imagine that, that there would be any kind of, you know, diminution or reduction of, of school, the commitment to school construction that the state has had over the years. So, so, you know, so there's no guarantee, obviously, but, you know, that, that's something that's, I think, is a high priority for every legislator and, and for, for every taxpayer, really. So, you know, I, I wouldn't worry too much about that. But you just keep doing what you're doing and make sure that the plans get us, you know, the, you know, the, fall within the guidelines, and I think we're going to be okay.
Anyone else?
Hi, guys. My question's really more focused on the challenges presented by, the demands placed on the district with respect to special education. And, you know, obviously, this has been a long time running conversation about how the state reimburses and ECS money being what it is, and you talked a little bit about it when you presented at the beginning. But I'm here to tell you that what we're doing right now cannot sustain itself. It just cannot. With, and we can provide you this data, you know, offline, but with the increasing, the increasing population of children identified with some level of special need, I think the number last year was something almost like 20% of our student body has some sort of intervention, from the highest to the lowest. And that's continuing to increase. And I don't think we're unique. In other words, Farmington, I don't think is any different than Simsbury, or Canton, or Avon in that regard. But placing the burden of funding the educational needs for those children on the, on a local municipality, to me, is, is as dangerous, if not more so, than talking about putting the cost of teacher pensions on municipalities. Because this is money that's, that's being spent in real time, this is operating expense money, and this is, this is the money that comes from the, the springtime referendums. So when you see budget increases that come back, and I haven't seen the budget yet for this year, but knowing, you know, what the special ed trends are going to be, it's probably going to be higher than I probably would have, would have liked to see. But these are the realities that we have in the school district, and it, it's not unique to Farmington. The way we pay for special education has to change in the state of Connecticut. It just has to change. There's no way this can continue on a 10-year time horizon. It just cannot. When we have needs for, you know, structural needs, forgetting the high school project, that's its own, you know, kind of entity, in a sense, right? But we also have other demands on our buildings that need to be dealt with as well. And so what will happen is, is we continue to deal with the, the increased cost of special education funding. It's going to become an issue, an impact on programs. Programs are going to be impacted over, over time. And it's just, it, and so then what happens is, and what's the most frustrating thing for me is that those districts that do really well, the burden continues to be placed, then it becomes a more increasing burden. You're penalized for being good. You're penalized for being inclusive. You're penalized for developing programs like social, emotional learning, because people are attracted to that, and rightly so, and we welcome these, you know, we're not, we're not an exclusionary community here. But it does begin to place a significant financial burden on a, on a finite base, tax base. So I'm, I'm here to implore you, you got to do something. You got to speak up there and talk. I'm not interested in recalibrating ECS funding. The entire model needs to be addressed, because it's just not going to sustain. The local school districts will not be able to keep up in 10 years, just won't. So I'm asking you to, to please advocate for that as best you can. I know, the one thing I do know is I have great confidence in both of you to do a great job, so I'm not like, trying to, I know I'm kind of preaching to the choir a little bit, but I just, I think it needs to be said. Please help.
Yeah. Thank you for saying that, and it's, it's important, and, you know, I represent four towns, West Hartford, part of Bloomfield, and Farmington, obviously, and then all of Burlington, and, and I hear it. So you're right. I mean, I hear it in all those communities. I think we've been, I feel like we've been playing whack-a-mole in terms of, with the public schools in the last few years. I just got in and was elected in 2016, so 2017, so just two biennial budgets, and, you know, the whacking the back, the ECS, zeroing out ECS, and then it was the teacher pension, and that, you know, various things to just kind of protect the public schools. And I think you're right, that, I mean, we need to get to a place where we're looking at reform too. And I do hope with a, a, a budget that is more sustainable, and I think we're, we have gotten there through some important structural reforms, that we'll be able to start addressing those things, because, you know, I think you're right. It's, it's going to continue to get worse, no question.
I don't have much to add. I would just say that, Bill, in your usual passionate and articulate manner, you have identified a really important problem. And I was just talking with Kathy, you know, a few days ago about this, and I guess, you know, to add insult to injury, I think I have this right, the excess cost is only reimbursed at about 70% now, rather than 100%. So we, again, we make, we make a commitment, we say we're going to, we're going to pay for anything above four and a half times, that, the excess cost, and then we don't pay for, we, we pay for 70% of it, and you guys have to eat the other 30%. And it's not right. But, and, and I guess what, what you're getting at, and I guess what we're, you know, what we're all concerned about is, the state needs to, to, to make that commitment and, and to take the pressure off, off of the individual towns. Considering, you know, the, our, you know, budget situation, you know, I don't know if now is the time to do it, but certainly now is the time to start thinking about doing it.
Well, no one's talking about it, really. So when we hear about, you know, people complain about Hartford all the time, right? And I, and I kind of get this, I find it kind of, I don't get so wrapped up in the complaints about Hartford and this broken, or this, this is one area, though, where I think Hartford really is broken, because, you know, we talk about the legislature, because there is this disconnect from what's happening actually in the communities, and, because you get these mandates, right? So the Department of Education drops mandates on us year after year, year over year. These are not federal mandates, these are state of Connecticut mandates, that have to be funded. And in other words, you just can't keep coming back, the state can't keep coming back and back and back, and, and on, on a small community, and expect us to continue to fund it at the, at the levels that we're, that we're, that we want to fund at, because we want to be good, right? In other words, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to do something here in our community just to do it. We're going to do it well.
I suspect if, if Farmington had a mediocre special ed curriculum or special ed, you know, department, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But you have an excellent, one with a great reputation, and as you say, as you said, victims of your own success. Everybody wants to come here, you know, and recognizes this is the place to come if, if you have a child with, with special needs. And so you probably should be compensated, you know, for that, for that factor, but you're not.
Right. Of course not, because the generalization's made about our community and what we can and can't afford. The other question I had, and it's real brief, has to do with bullying a little bit. We've done a really good job of identifying and, and how we handle bullying, investigating bullying, things like that. The one thing I hear in, in both my professional life and in my personal life, and talking to, and it's not necessarily with Farmington, I can say that, but, is that there seems to be a lack of clarity or understanding about the rights of families whose children are bullied. It's very clear on how we investigate bullying, it's very clear on how we handle bullying in terms of, you know, trying to deescalate situations, but I would just say, just keep that in the back of your mind as you're discussing, because I know that that's going to come up, it's always on the agenda, you guys are talking about bullying now. I think it's really important that there's some clarity with respect to the rights of parents whose children have been victimized. That's, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there as something that needs to be kind of talked about. I don't have an opinion on it, because I don't know enough about it, but I know that that's something that I hear from. But it's not necessarily from Farmington, I can say that.
Yeah, I'd love to, love to talk to you more about that.
I'll talk to you about that offline. That'd be great.
I'll set them.
Yes, thank you.
Kathy?
So, thank you both for being here. I have to say, both of you are so responsive and always willing to listen, and I think that Farmington's very fortunate to have individuals who care so much and are there, just a phone call away, so I really appreciate it. I would say that I really, I, I echo what everyone has said, as far as the need to fully fund excess cost is a, a big issue. If you look at the CAPS legislative priorities, that's our number one priority. There are some funding models out there that are very concerning, that are being proposed, and CAPS doesn't support those, and superintendents across Connecticut, you know, really want our current funding model fully funded, you know, so that would be extremely helpful across Connecticut. Also, you know, student safety and well-being is a major area of focus for school districts, so I, I do echo what Liz had said, and actually, CAPS does have a proposal that looks at the current security grant funding, and why aren't we doing similar work on the social and emotional side? So that is something, I know all of these things have to do with additional money, but they're so important, and we, we want to do even more in that area, and, you know, we try each year to put as much as we can in our budget, but, you know, our, our local taxpayers, we have to really think about our, you know, our residents, and we want to make sure that we bring forward responsible budgets. Mandate relief would be a place where we could save money. We have been, pretty much every year, additional mandates are put on us, and, you know, it could be as simple as, well, we want you to do this additional training. Well, if everyone has an additional training for two hours, you take that two hours and you times that by everyone's salary for two hours. It's a very expensive proposition. And so we, I know, are working diligently with, you know, the CAPS organization to try to limit mandates, and to try to come up with some kind of criteria that would be used to vet how much it would cost for each mandate that is passed. And sometimes, I, I mean, I believe that that mandate shouldn't be in place until a year after, because it would give us the opportunity to actually fund it in our operating budgets. We sometimes get the mandate after we've already set our budget, and now we're faced with additional costs that run our budgets over what we budgeted. So those are, I mean, I can't tell you, and I can't say enough about P, professional development mandates. I mean, there's, there's a mandate for everything, and it takes us away from equity training and, you know, excellence in education, like what is the latest research say about, you know, student-centered learning? We're not doing that. And then we're doing mandated training, because we have limited time for our staff to do these types of training. So those are some, some of the items that, you know, we're looking at, both here in Farmington, but across the state through the superintendence group. And I think I sent you the public policy agenda, just so that you're aware of some of the areas, and whatever help you can give us when it comes to reimbursement for our facilities, not just FHS, but all facility projects. You know, we really appreciate when, when we do receive any type of relief through that, when it comes to, you know, Farmington takes on the lion's share of any building project, but we do believe that we don't ask much from the state when it comes to facility projects, and, you know, this is a really important one, so continue to do the work you're doing.
In that vein, and I, I agree with you, I mean, if Farmington takes on a lot, and you, you know this system better than I do, Kathy, is, is it legitimate to go to the state and say, look, we, you know, we've, we've contributed our share, and perhaps more than our share, in, in, you know, I guess you could name, you know, the, you know, taking on students from other communities, and, 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 you know, having this great special ed, you know, curriculum and so forth, does that get you anything extra from the state? Could it get you anything extra from the state?
I would love to talk about that.
Okay.
Because I think we've, I know I have talked about that in, in different groups, that maybe there are some creative ways that we can capture additional reimbursement. And you mentioned, you know, we do take open choice students, and we take a percentage, and can that be figured in, in some way to reimbursement? We would love to have those discussions, and we would be willing to have those discussions at any time, because it, it is very challenging when you're looking at a, a large facility project in a community that does take on most of the cost of that project. It can be very challenging, and so you see districts or communities like us not going forward with projects, and yet we see surrounding districts doing, you know, being able to achieve projects, and we're all paying state, you know, taxes, and Farmington, I just saw something in the paper. the paper, is one of the top, I think, communities paying state taxes, and yet, we get very little back. And that is a real challenge for us, I think. And whether we're talking about special education, or we're talking about facilities, looking at it through that lens can be very frustrating, and I think there's an article in the Hartford Current today about that, so.
It reminds me, you know, the, this past year, even though my kids go to West Hartford Public Schools, I have all three children this past summer in your strings camp. And I have had two of them in for 10 years. My Charlie just started on the violin, it's a little squeaky, but it's coming along. And Jenna Fantasi, who, you know, is just, we just, she's so dear to us, and David Kramer, and so, so anyways, one, we're grateful, and my Maggie, in part because of them, as a freshman, got second chair in the statewide orchestra for cello, so thank you. Would not, I know I'm a proud dad, and I'm bragging, but, I don't know, I have no musical ability, so I can, I can do that. But anyway, my larger point was that, this is, there are students, I mean, you don't need me to tell you this because you know it, but from all over the region who come to the strings camp, it is such an incredible resource that you provide, and it's not much money, you know? I mean, if you look at what the parents pay, it is a bargain, don't raise the price, but I'm just
Hold on, let me write that.
No, I'm just saying, it is, it's such a treasure, and so, you know, just speaking about kind of what resource the Farmington schools are for folks, you know, and its choice, and its special ed and things, but it's also the strings camp, and that's touched our family personally, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, one other thing, I just want to bring it back to a couple of the things that Derek said right at the beginning. So, I don't think this even needs to be said, but I hope you are all confident that Derek and I, and Gennaro, and Tammy, the four of us, are going to fight as we always do to make sure that the ECS money stays intact, to make sure that municipal aid in general stays intact, you know, and that the, you know, the TRB money doesn't get pushed onto the towns, and the threat comes almost every year now. So, you know, and I always tell people, you know, don't get, don't get too excited about a proposal in January. You know, if it's still, if it's still hanging out there in May or June, maybe you should get excited, but a proposal in January and February, you know, it's usually going to get beaten back by, by the representatives, you know? And we all represent our towns, and, you know, we recognize what a burden it would be on every town, you know, to have, to have, you know, those costs, you know, pushed onto the towns rather than absorbed, and continue to be taken up by the state. So, we're going to fight as hard as we can, and we always do, and we usually make out pretty well, in good times and in bad. You know, I think the general trend shows that we make out pretty well. So, we're going to continue to do that. And just as far as Derek and his concern about, about musical ability, I always explained it, my lack of ability as talent skips a generation. So, I guess it skipped you, but your kids, you know, are the next generation, so there you go.
That's my wife.
Anyone else for, any comments for legislatures? Well, we just, we want to thank you both so much for being here tonight and listening, and we know your history as your stewards of education, and we know you're working hard on our behalf at the Capitol, so thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, to the fun part of the meeting, I hope.
Almost. So, our next item on the agenda, item for approval of minutes, the January 6, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ellen, I had something, just on page three, Rusty Malick's name is missed out.
Thank you.
M-A-L-I-K, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you. Also on page one, Mr. Beckett's name is.
I wasn't going to say anything, if anybody was paying attention.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions? Item on the agenda, item 6B, Farmington High School Building Committee Presentation of FHS Conceptual Options. I'd like to welcome Megan Guerra to the table, Chair of the Farmington High School Building Committee. Thank you, Megan. I just want to say, for those that don't know you, Megan is our just exceptional Chair on the Farmington High School Building Committee. We all spend many hours in committee, and you know her, and subcommittee, and Megan just goes beyond that, the hours that she's spending and the commitment, and her guidance throughout this process has been, you are exceptional, and we're so happy you're here tonight.
There's so much that we can learn from our students.
I, it's, it's very interesting, as we transition, first of all, tough act to follow there, first of all, so I'm going to try to do my best here as we walk through some process conversation, which definitely ties back to some of the points that we just learned about, which is, it's kind of pretty amazing, if you think about it, how they're learning skills that we're going to apply in this very next conversation. But, again, my name is Megan Guerra, for those of you who haven't met me or seen me on video at this point, which there are hours of. But I'm just going to take about 10 minutes tonight, I don't want that to reflect the amount of work, effort, and energy that has gone into the process to date. It is just really to provide a level set to the BOE tonight, based on the work that's been done so far. In front of you, you have a copy of the presentation that I'm going to go through the slides, as well as, you all did receive lots of information in front of you of each of the conceptual options. So, please, by all means, use that as a supplement to what I'm going to talk about today, which is very, very high level, about as high level as you possibly could get on process and a review of the conceptual options. So, to begin, the very first slide that you have up there, I just wanted to do a quick overview of what our charge is. So, we were actually charged by the Town Council as the Farmington High School Building Committee, there's a full-page document that is actually out on the website that details this, but very high-level points, and I'm going to focus specifically on Part One and Part Two, Phase One, which brings us right up through referendum. So, again, bullet points associated to that. So, Part One, we were charged to review all reference documentation, that is everything, all reports, anything that was done on the high school to date, as well as surveys that were completed through ad hoc committees, looking at all the past documentation that was completed by the previous committee, which was very important to us to kind of level set and move our process forward. So, we did use all that information. The second part to that was engaging multiple architectural firms for competitive conceptual design. So, this is a very distinct portion to our process, this was new, that we were actually asked as a committee to bring two architects on board. We have representatives from both tonight, actually here, and the documentation you have reflects their conceptual designs that I'm going to talk about in a minute. Independent pricing review with an owner's rep slash estimator, so this was another change to the process, where we brought an owner's rep in to help us in the beginning of the process, which has been very, very helpful, to guide us, give us some expertise on this process, and help us manage this competitive process as well with two architects on board, as well as there was an independent estimator associated to that, that helped us with pricing around these options. So, we, it's, should be noted that this is really an important part of the process as well, that we did have an independent estimator look at the pricing of these options, and that's the information that was brought to us for review. The last part really to the process was reporting our findings out to Town Council, I'm going to talk about that in detail in a minute. And then, it happens to be point E in the, in the charge, but it was considering alternate locations was also added to our charge. So, you may have seen a lot of documentation out there, it is out on our website, where we did a full site evaluation through the entire town of Farmington to see was there an alternate site or location for this building. After careful evaluation and going back to the state, we determined actually there was not. So, the best place for us to place a new high school, if that is the choice of facility, would be on the municipal campus as it exists today. So, as you look at the options, that's where you see, where you'll see the focus, will be on the municipal campus. Part Two, Phase One, so once we actually give that information over to Town Council, we will be given back from Town Council a projected scope and net project cost range. So, that is an important part of the process, and again, different than the process last time, where that information will come back to us, and then we would be recharged as a committee to take that information, as well as all the information we've learned to date, go back to the drawing board, and really get a better understanding of what those, the actual solution will be, so that we can get details to put forward toward referendum. So, that's as far as I'm going to go. Obviously, there's more to it after that process, but for tonight, I think it's important for us to focus on that as a goal, and really working this plan forward to referendum. Any questions on that so far? Nope. So, the next slide, again, is just a more detailed outline of the process and timeline. So, again, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this, you guys might have seen this already, but it really just takes the charge that I just explained, and translates that into a process for us to follow, and goals for us to actually check off, that we actually, you can see up there. So, you know, we did establish subcommittees, which you guys, I'm sure, have heard a lot about. We've done some pretty extensive communications planning, and that's something we will continue to do from now until probably the project is complete. So, that's not something that will end anytime soon. The site analysis, I did mention selecting owner's representation, selecting firms for architectural services, that was all evaluations that we did as a committee to try to get the best experts that we felt were the best fit for this project, to help us, help move us forward. Educational specifications, you guys are more than aware of that part of the process. I'm not going to go into any more detail, but obviously, a big part of understanding what the needs are for this project, and how we can build a facility, or renovate a facility, or maintain a facility that will meet the needs. So, that's, was something that we certainly considered. And then, creating conceptual design options, maintain, renovate, and new, as we've talked about, and you'll see that big yellow square there is where we are right now. So, as of today, we are in the process of reviewing and analyzing those conceptual design options. So, step by step, this is the process we're walking through. Again, next step is presenting those conceptual design options to Town Council. That is actually happening on February 4th. So, this Wednesday, we will be coming forward with a recommendation out of our deliberations as a committee, and then on February 4th, we will have a full recommendation with context, with understanding, again, of this process. All the information we feel it's important to share with Town Council will be in that February 4th meeting. So, very important, I think, for everybody to attend and view, and be able to really kind of hear, hear the full story. And then, we would move right into the, after, after we complete the transfer of knowledge, we will actually move into preliminary plan phase, which, as I talked about, is really looking at more of a schematic design, really getting down into the details, understanding what's included, bringing us to ultimately the town meeting or referendum, which right now, we are anticipating fall of 2020. So, that's a general outline, there's a lot of steps that are within that process, but that is high-level, the steps we've taken so far, and what we have in front of us. No questions? Okay. So, before we actually kind of review those conceptual options, and what they look like at the very highest level, and I can't reiterate that enough when we talk about them, I just wanted to talk about what a conceptual design option is, so that we can level set. So, this is a very important piece of the puzzle here, is that it's a two-part process, as I just talked about, conceptual designs, and then we move to a more detailed design after that. So, keep in mind, as we're walking through here, we're really trying to get us to a starting point, a good understanding with a lot of knowledge, how do we distill that down, and make it so that we can really digest that information and make some smart choices with it. So, again, very high-level design concepts, categorizes either maintain, renovate, or new building options. Our focus here, if you've seen our evaluation criteria that we've used, it's that big chart that you might see in our meetings, it's all based on the statement of need, and some other factors that we've heard through community feedback, through Board of Ed feedback, all that information was wrapped up into that evaluation criteria, to help us really look more closely at each one of those conceptual options. Again, high-level costs, using an independent estimator, important part of the process. And then, so I'm going to make a point here to talk about estimated tax impact. So, that is a number that you have seen out there, associated to these concepts, and I want to be really clear on what that is. This is a point in time number that is really just a standalone project. So, right now, there's pieces to this puzzle that we have to put together as we move along. Next step is actually a meeting tomorrow night, where we will actually get more financial information from, from the town, and what the impact of these, the overall finances look like. And please remember that this high school project is just one piece of that. So, again, in context, it's something for us to keep in mind. So, again, always refer back to these as conceptual, high-level starting points, that we will use to make some decisions moving forward. Okay. So, the next slide you're going to see, I'm waiting for the architects to say something, because I've taken your entire presentations and boiled it down to three bullet points. I was using, I was trying to use my audience to the best of my ability here to focus on some things that maybe I thought would be important.
Have you been talking to Chris Fagan?
Yes. But again, this, again, is just as high-level as it possibly could be at this point. Please refer back to the documentation you have in front of you with all the details, but just wanted to give you a snapshot. That is all this is, is a snapshot of the concepts. So, for the maintained conceptual options, we have obviously the two architectural firms, I have put the, in two categories here, obviously, by architect, and the numbers you see there are the project costs, and then the projected cost with state reimbursement, again, an estimate. So, something to keep in mind as we look forward. Again, I will keep reiterating conceptual options, starting point. This is what we know right now, point in time. So, things to look at for QA and M, for their maintain option, we really kind of looked at that as more of a renovate light option. There was more to that option, which included, did include in addition in that option. Even so, when we did the full evaluation, there were some opportunities, and we didn't see a full address of the full statement of needs within that option. And as always, when we're going to talk about maintain, there will be disruption to learning when we do work like this within the school. So, whether it's internal swing space that you see here, or we see portables being used, it's something to keep in mind as we're looking at these options. So, TSKP, the, again, you see the numbers there, you'll see a dramatic difference between those two numbers, different approaches to the maintain options, and again, TSKP, maintain-only option. It does include potential additional capital expenditures in those dollars as well. So, if we don't hit all the needs with the initial solution, there could be more dollars coming down the road that we're going to need to spend. So, again, something to keep in mind. With maintain options, very hard to meet that full statement of needs, and we didn't see that happen with this option, and again, disruption of learning through construction or portables in that option. So, again, very high-level bullet points only, as far as a representation of what you see in the packets, and some of the kind of the heavy hitter items that we hear specifically around education, learning, those kind of things. Yes, Bill?
So, I was, I was present for the presentations that night, and I have to tell you, I came away with a pretty bad feeling with respect to how QA and M had approached the charge as related to the maintain-only, it really was not a maintain presentation. And it was very frustrating, because I felt like the building committee was not really left with two choices. The idea here was to have two choices at each, at each option. And have you had any feedback in terms of if they went back to the drawing board, would they give you another, you know, because I thought TSKP did a great option of responding specifically to the charge as it related to this conceptual option, and then, and then obviously left with that pit in your stomach of, okay, it's $49 million, but it's going to be another $40 million, or $50 million over 10 years. So, can you maybe give me some additional information about the building committee's sense of how that went, and that kind of thing?
So, there was a lot of conversation that happened around these things, and some of it, to be aware, and just how the process was done in executive session due to the nature of the competitive process. So, really what this is based on was our RFP, and the parameters that we laid out in our RFP, much of that was, was based on a minimum requirement. So, it was a choice, it was an approach that you could take to meet those minimums, and I think it was interpreted as such, when we, when we saw those options come forward. So, when we took, when we looked at the RFP and what it actually stated, that's clearly what it states, is a minimum requirement that needed to be met. what it states is a minimum requirement that needed to be met.
Right. How they interpreted that was up to them.
And it's part of that process, is really saying, we have two architects. Those conversations that we had with them were, you know, independent with them to answer questions and feedback and concerns that they had on the design. And then they could take that information and move forward with it in the way they, they felt would, would meet the need.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that? Okay, renovate conceptual options. So again, as high-level as we possibly could do it. So you see the numbers there for QA and M and TSKP on, and remember, these are the overall project costs and then the net cost with projected state reimbursement. So I will reiterate it again, estimates always on conceptual options as we're looking at these. So kind of the big hitters to keep in mind, QA and M, learning communities in the back of the building. So that was something that people did notice as a difference versus learning houses in the front of the building on TSKP. So that was kind of a big difference between the two options. But both met the statement of needs. When we looked at the evaluation and said, what did we ask them to do to meet the statement of needs, the renovate options do do that. But in taking into consideration, again, something that comes up considerably is disruption to learning. So anytime we're constructing on the building that the students are in, we know that there's phasing involved. We know there's ways to minimize that disruption, but there is disruption that, that will occur, just based on the fact that we have a minimum amount of space to move people around in. So again, something to keep in mind when we're looking at, at renovate and the two options that have, that were presented. Okay. And finally, the new build conceptual options. So I kind of defined these, this is how we refer to them, I think, when we look at them, and even when we were, when people were looking at these in the community meeting, we kind of saw these same things. So QA and M had, had what, kind of in quotes, that river approach. So that thought process that they had around their design concept with the river running through the center of the school. So something to distinguish them against TSKP's kind of mainstream approach. So it's two different views, two different looks. That's the benefit of the conceptual design process, is getting to see something different and being able to understand, what does that mean? What does that mean for Farmington? What is the fit and feel? You hear us refer to that as a committee, and, and what that means to our town. So was kind of a piece that, that did differentiate the two options. Again, a new building will meet the statement of needs, we would hope. That's the point, right, that this, at this point, we've, we were basically starting from scratch, and we're going to meet the statement of needs one by one, as they've been identified. To note, as far as site considerations are concerned, they're pretty much in about the same location. So something to look at when you're looking, there is some, some slight variations, but in where they're situated on the site, they're very similar. So, but you can, you can see some of those distinctions if you look at the plans closely. Again, learning-based communities, it's, that was something that was part of the ed specs and an understanding of how those are translated. You can see in those designs. And as far as new building is concerned, you can see there's really no disruption to learning at that point. Now, this, I'm not, this is not about mincing words. Will there be disruption to parking? Yes. Will there be disruption to, who knows, construction areas generally around? Yes, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is distinctly, there will be no disruption to learning. And that's what I've specified in the other options as well. So I don't want it to say that, you know, you'd come away with my communication as there's no disruption to anything. That's not the case. I was focusing on learning, just because it's an important part of the conversation, but something to keep in mind. And then very last piece, and you've already heard me speak about these, but just next steps for us as a, as a committee. So January 28th, which is tomorrow, this really doesn't directly impact our committee independently, but it is something to keep in mind, as I mentioned, is that town council financial review with the finance director. So this is something that happens every year. This is not anything that's unique, but it's good information, especially this year. Because again, we've got to start thinking about this project as a piece of the puzzle and how it fits into the overall financing for the town and what that means. January 29th, this is kind of our big meeting for the building committee. So this is our final deliberations and a recommendation moving forward. So we will, majority of that meeting will be in executive session. Once again, we will start winding that down, obviously, executive session, once we actually move past the competitive design process. But we do have one last meeting that we need to conduct business in that way, and we will come out with a recommendation with some context around that. But again, we really would be looking at a full presentation in that February 4th meeting, which is the recommendation to town council. After that, we go into that phase two, as I mentioned, step two, excuse me, a lot of words. Receive, that, we'll get that, receive that net municipal project cost range and scope from town council, and then we will quickly turn around and move into planning part two, phase one of the change, of the charge in preparation for referendum.
Yes, Kristi?
Just by recommendation, that means which one of the options that you are?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So really-
It's going to be one.
It will only be one that we will move forward as a recommendation. Now, I want to be clear in the fact that all data, all information will be handed over to town council. So I don't want you to think this will be done in a vacuum in any way. Everything we know and learn, because that's what we've been charged to do, will be handed over. But we've been asked, based on the fact that we've spent countless hours on learning and understanding and working with our partners, to, to give a recommendation, which would be, first consist of understanding which scope we would go with. So would it be maintain, renovate, or new? And then from there, the next step would be which option within that scope would be the best fit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Megan, I'm getting this question. After the January 29th meeting, will we be coming out of executive session with a recommendation? Or I know you will be presenting on the 4th, but when, when will the-
We will, yeah. We will be coming out of our deliberation for executive session with a recommendation, again, with context to the best of our ability at that time. So we, I'm not going to come out with a full presentation that will be handed over to town council. We need some time to pull that information together. But we thought it was only right, and we do have to vote on what that recommendation would be. So we would be coming out and actually putting a motion forward to vote for that, that recommendation. And then that certainly would be out there for, for public knowledge at that point.
Thank you. Any other questions for Megan?
No, I don't want to, I just want to make a comment.
Just go right ahead. Go right ahead, Liz. I'm ready.
Just to, just, I want to highlight one of the things that I noticed that was a difference between the two new conceptual designs. And I understand it's conceptual, so I don't want to go too far into it. But was it, TSKP, I think, had the, they kept the 900 wing, the 2003 building, right? And that kept central office separate from the high school. So I noticed that wasn't one of the-
I had, I had to pick and choose.
But I just feel that's kind of, that's something that was a little different that wasn't on here.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely.
Several people at the table, so I thought-
Yeah, that's definitely is one of the things that is different in the overall design approach. Certainly, when you look, it's pretty clear when you look at just even the, the general representation, you'll see it there as a difference between the two. And it, you know, there's, there's thoughts around that, what makes the most sense, what doesn't. So yeah, that's part of our process to take a look at and see, you know, what makes the most sense.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you for all your question.
Yeah, Christine.
Hi.
Yes?
Thank you, first of all, like Liz said, for all your work. I know you've-
Not just me.
The number of hours is-
There's people at the table on a great committee.
Is a lot. So, and I know January has been quite the month. So given that, you did all the meetings in January, and you're coming up February 4th, do you feel like you have enough data back from people in town? I know you did that one meeting on Saturday, and there was a great turnout for that. Do you feel like you have enough information? Because it's, it's, this is a quick-moving part of the process, but I know it's been a very lengthy process, and that, you know, it's, it's been ongoing.
It has, and I think you have to look at it in full context of all meetings that we've had for, that have included public comment. So although sometimes it feels like we've been kind of in executive session, there was public comment before and after each one of those, as well as an opportunity to, to speak along the way. And we did have a community meeting as well in the fall-
Right.
Where we did have people come and tour. We had Acosta from the state come in and talk about kind of state reimbursement and the process. So people did get to speak there. I feel we did give people ample opportunity to express, not only in person. So we do know that not everybody wants to stand up and speak in front of everybody, but we have received a lot of online comments, which has been fantastic from people. And giving them the opportunity, even through this entire month and through most of December, to have that feedback opportunity, I think, has been really, really helpful for us. And I think people have really used that. We have gotten a lot of great feedback from people of all different kinds, and different perspectives, different, different lens. That's really great for us to be able to see and, and really understand everybody's perspective. So, you know, it's funny, we've gotten some feedback around the turnaround, because I think people are thinking, oh, well, we just saw everything last week, and now all of a sudden. And I, I want to make sure people are clear, that's not the case at all. So we have, and it's something I will talk, speak to Wednesday as well, is an understanding of where along the way we've been interacting with the architects. We have not only met with them, but independent of them. And we've had feedback sessions with teachers, where there's been conversations driven around giving feedback around that. So really, our goal here was to try to get as many, I, I use the word inputs, but maybe that's a little, I don't know, too much for people. But just all the information, any sources of information we can find, bringing them and kind of culminating in, into one area for us to evaluate and analyze. That's been our goal all along, and we've been gathering that, I would think. You know, we've really been gathering about the process since March. And, and that's been a really important piece to it as well. So not only process, but what do you, what do you think? You know, what can we do better? How do we do better? And what do we update on the website? How do we do, update the FAQs to meet people's needs? There's all sorts of aspects to it beyond, what do you think, the concepts?
Right.
How, how can we do a better job in getting out to the community and helping them understand what's in front of them?
Good. Okay. Well, thank you again. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do have a question, actually.
Yeah.
Really fast. Alternative ed, how to get them back into the high school, because they are separated now? And have you collaborated with other schools in the district? Because I know of other districts that had an alternative ed outside the school and then had to go back in. And are they going to have separate entrances? Or how are you going to separate them that still make them feel comfortable and not overwhelmed with a big school?
I'll, I'll wait on the collaboration piece to you. But the, we do, the renovate options and the maintain options both include alternate education in those plans with separate entrances for those. But the beauty of that, and I have been educated along the way with this process, is, is being able to give them the independence that they need, but also be able to use all, everything that's available to them within the school. So we know that's an important part of the process. And so it's something we've certainly considered and was actually, is part of our evaluation criteria that we're looking at, to make sure that that's, that's something that's inclusive. So I don't know about the collaboration piece.
Collaboration, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning. Just how do we collaborate, collaborate with other districts with our alternative?
Yeah, knowing if you talked to other districts on how they did it, that's all.
Yes, yes.
Like Bristol, for instance, did it.
Yeah. So we haven't talked to Bristol, but we, you know, there are alternative schools within high schools and outside of high schools. And I think what we've learned from having one that's off-site is there, you know, are benefits, and then there are unintended consequences. And some of those unintended consequences relate to not being able to access courses that students really do want to take. And we would have to transport the student over, and we are transporting students over to the high school to take courses, but there's a resource to do, doing that. And that is a driver and a van. And so we've had some challenges with being able to manage all the different places that students need to be, whether it's an internship, or it's going to the high school to take SAT or to take a course. We are, I think, learning more about how you can create a school within a school and definitely give them their space. And we've learned a lot from our STEP program, which is in the high school. It is a separate, very much separate, and a very safe place for those students to be when they need that, their own space. But yet, we've also seen the amazing benefits of when students are ready to take advantages of, you know, take advantage of courses within the high school. They're able to do that with ease, because they're within the high school. So I think we've learned a lot over the years, and we feel comfortable bringing students back. But it would be a transition. We would be very careful about it, because, you know, it's off-site for other reasons, you know, that students, a large, comprehensive high school can be overwhelming at times for students. So we want to create that small learning community, like we have done with STEP, within the high school. So still benefit of, you know, very, you know, strong connections to the individuals within that program. But when students are ready to take advantage of all the offerings at the high school, or they want to play a sport, or they want to be part of clubs, they'll have all those resources right there for them. So we feel that it would be, you know, a benefit. I think it's also going to be a benefit with potentially even having it offered to more students if needed. Whether that's, and we've, we've done this in STEP, you know, tuition in, in students. We have some small districts around us who really struggle with providing those programs, or just the increase, you know, an increased need that we might see here in Farmington. So I also think it's a space benefit, too, a safety and security benefit to be on campus where you have an SRO. So, you know, we, we see many, many benefits bringing our alternative high school to the high school campus.
Oh, thank you. It's more clear. Thank you.
Could I just say a minute, sorry, just take a moment to thank Megan and Kat, who are here. And, you know, we're always collaborating and meeting and planning. Chris from, you know, our owner's rep, really has been, from CSG, has been such a support to us along the way. I can't say enough about our team and the building committee. We're a working group. We work, you know, long hours. I, I have to say, it's just been a great process being led by an amazing individual, Megan. I also want to thank our architects who are here. This has been, I'm sure, a very different process in many ways for them, but I, I have to say that they've been so collaborative and so willing to be wherever we need them to be. And I, I can't thank our architects enough. So thank you so much.
Well said. Thank you, Megan. So, thank you for coming.
Yeah, we appreciate the time.
As I was saying, if Megan can't do it, nobody.
Oh, just. We're going to tell my husband that, see what he says. And Bill's laughing, just because he knows him. Yeah, I, we appreciate the time. We want you guys to know, please, if you have questions, some, I, I'm the type of person, I need to sometimes think it out a while. So if you go home, by all means, reach out to me, if you can find me, I'm sure. We, you can also go through the website. We, all that goes to key contacts on our committee as well. But please, any questions at all, just let us know. We'd rather be able to get you the information you need, because you're going to be asked questions, too. So use the website, please, as a reference. The FAQs are really important to kind of level set information, but it, and it's a good resource for you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan. Thanks. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 6C, preliminary special services budget. Lori?
I feel like there's been a lot of conversation leading my way into this. I became the right guy. So thank you for having me. So first, I want to thank the board for all of your support over my last 10 years in just, you know, really prioritizing special education. And Bill, I appreciate those comments that you made earlier as far as asking about funding. It's certainly very important. So, good job, Bill. Okay. Sure. So again, I, I know that it's a lot of slides that you have in your packet, but certainly, you know, a takeaway from our mission statement is that we value all students, and we value the achievements and the ability for students to reach their potential. And that is reflected in our statement. And now I'd like to get into some of the data. So as you can see, our total number of, this is K to 12 students, not pre-K, currently- Currently, we have 518 students who have IEPs, have a disability in the district. Of all of our K to 12 students for whom we're responsible, 12.45% are in special education. You can see the, our total budget number there, along with the number of FTEs. These are certified FTEs that are in the budget, so that's 62.95. By the way, I had to watch the second graders to see how you touched this board, so I was glad that they did that. Okay. So, again, these are the areas that I'm going to go through tonight. I'll do an overview of our programs, talk about some of the highlights, some of our points of pride, and then our budget focus priorities this year. So, I think this tells the story. If you look at our percentage of students with disabilities, starting back in October 2009, and how it has gone up incrementally since then, this is the same pattern that the state data and all the towns around us show. I believe the state, now, the last data I saw from them, they were hovering close to 15% as an average identification. So, we have some municipalities that are higher. We're a little lower, but this is where we are right now. And you can see, there's the number of students, and of course, that percentage is also skewed by what our total enrollment is. We went down in 2018, we're up, so that, of course, influences the percentage. This is something that I think, as a board, you can be very proud of. This tells the story of all of the benefits of the programs that you have funded here. Our total percentage of, of our students in special education, only 5.7% are at outplacements right now. The, when it says percentage other public, that would be either a Krec school, one of their outplacements, or we do have students that are in another, there's another public school in a city that has a school that we use. The percentage of other private is 3.5%, but as you can see, when you look at us compared to our Derg, our outplacement numbers are low. So, again, our, looking at our recommended areas of focus this year, again, we're going to talk about programming as we do every year, mental health support, which has been a big topic for us for a number of years, focusing on preschool and specialized reading. So, just briefly, I want to go over the main programs that we have in district. We have our specialized learning centers, which we have in grades pre-K to 12. When I came here 10 years ago, we had one class, and we're adding the second, and now I think we have seven. So, we have them all the way up through the district. These classes are for students with autism that require highly specialized instruction. The SALE program was developed a few years ago at the high school, and that is a program for students who are higher functioning, who are able to go out to Gen Ed classes but need the social emotional supports. And that's grades nine to 12. We have SEL learning classrooms, grades K to eight. And then, the STEP program, which is the next, you know, following the SEL programs, is the STEP program, and that's grades nine to 12 at the high school. So, I won't go through all of this. I know it was in your packet, but I think some of the important things to note that we have continued to develop this programming and have been able to keep students in district. And the real benefit of keeping them in district is that they get to interact with their typical peers, and they get to access Gen Ed as they are able to. We currently have 51 students in our district that are in one of the SLC programs. And as you can see, we have at the elementary level, we have them at West District and Union. And so, if students are in, assigned to East Farms or NOAA, but they require that, we bring them into one of those two programs. And again, we have them at West Woods, IAR, and the high school. And we continue to collaborate with the Center for Children with Special Needs in assisting us in programming. Then, again, more highlights from the SLC. You can tell, I love the SLC programs, but it's something that has been a real joy to work with some of these very talented people that are in these programs, that run them, and to see the growth that our students make. So, some of the recommendations for the SLC, we want to maintain our current programming and staffing, continue our consultation with CCSN. And the, right now, our Early Childhood Committee is doing a review of our preschool programs, and that would include looking at our SLC programs, along with our collaborative preschool program. So, there'll be more to come on that in the future. So, our SALE program, which I mentioned briefly, again, serves grades nine to 12, provides social emotional supports for students with autism at the high school. Again, many of these students are out in Gen Ed a good percentage of the day, others not so much, but it gives them a home base that they can go back to. They are engaged in the Social Thinking Program, which is a scientifically-based program that Michelle Garcia-Winner had written and continues to write about. And we also provide vocational planning and supports for the students. So, currently, we have 15 students assigned to the SALE program at the high school. And the metacognition class, which is something that we are very proud of, really, students in there have shown really strong social gains from participation in it. And for our proposal this year, we are, we're going to propose a reduction of one job coach, really due to reduced student need right now. A lot of the students have jobs and are doing well in the community with them, so that is one of the proposals in the budget this year. The SEL programs. So, if you recall, last year, we decided that we were going to sort of collapse, we had two SEL classrooms at the elementary level, we collapsed them into one at NOAA and added staffing for it. And that program, I think, has had a really strong start. We have a dedicated special education teacher and a dedicated social worker that works with the students in this building. And the program is really focused on reducing behavioral challenges while supporting academics. And I think this data is something we were really thrilled to see. And I'm talking now about just this program at NOAA. The students in that program, September, only spent 49% of their time in Gen Ed, and as of December, it's up to 74%, which is really always our goal, least restrictive environment, having the kids successful in the classroom. So, it is our hope and goal to continue that trajectory with these students. And for next year, we're proposing to maintain the current staffing that was put in place for this year. STEP program. This is a program at the high school that serves students, again, grades nine to 12. It's supported by a full-time special education teacher, a full-time social worker, along with some paraprofessionals that are assigned. Students are mainstreamed in the classes, and we do a lot of work now with job-embedded skills. And actually, I was happy to hear that all of the students in the STEP program, now they're juniors and seniors, all have part-time jobs outside of school, which was a big goal for us. And again, this is some of our things we are very proud of. We have 50 students that have been through the STEP program, and we've also had, as you can see, 26 of those, 52% came back from outplacements. So, it's really been a good, solid program in supporting students in the high school. And I know you were talking a minute ago about that. I think that the real, I'd say, it's hard, so, we were trying to quantify this in the STEP program, like, what is the success? What is it that makes it so successful there? And it's a family feeling in there, where they, the kids feel like they have a home, they have strong relationships, and that, I think, is what keeps the kids coming back in for help and are able to be in the big high school environment, knowing they have this little cocoon where they can go and get the support they need. And what we've seen from that is that when the kids feel safe and they feel secure, then they're able to take chances. And we have many kids that are in activities after school. Again, I said, many of them have jobs and are out in Gen Ed classes, as well as getting some classes in the STEP program. So, it's something that we feel like has been very successful there. And we are proposing to maintain the current programming and staffing as is right now. So, we've spent a lot of time over the last few years talking about mental health services. That would include our psychologists, social workers, and counselors. I think the board has been very supportive of this, and we have increased our mental health services every year for the last, I think, since I've actually been here. When I first came here, our psychologist at the elementary, we had .3 psychologists. Then, we went to .4, then to .5. Couple of years ago, we added, we had a half-time psychologist at IAR and a half-time one at West Woods. Now, we have a full-time at both of those buildings. We've also added the care team, which is three more professionals that are out in the schools, supporting teams, supporting students, supporting the faculty, in helping students who struggle with mental health needs. So, we've also done a lot of work in all these areas. And this year, we, in Farmington, started a regional SEL group, where we're working with a number of towns around us and looking at best practices in the areas of intervention and in programming. So, that's another collaboration that we're very proud of. So, and again, more things that are in place, the implementation of Ruler, which I really seen, I've heard teachers using the language of it, students using the language, so I feel like that's made a big difference. Restorative practices are, this year, focused at the high school in West Woods, but other buildings already have things in place. And you can see the rest of the list there, of things that have happened this year and in the past. Again, care teams, some of the highlights of the work they're doing, providing professional development across the district. They do a lot of emergency crisis support, have created, if you've ever seen their behavioral resource website, it's fabulous, and there's a lot of resources that teachers use. And they provide training to district mental health professionals on risk assessments, which we'll talk about in a second. Okay. So, this graph, I think, sort of really tells the story of, you know, where many of our students are. This is the number of risk assessments done at the high school over the last years. And as you can see, it's staggering when you look at 2011, 12, and then you look at 2018, 19. So, these risk assessments are done when a child indicates that they are either at risk to sell for others, and they, a formal risk assessment is done. So, that's where we are. And because of, as we know, the mental health issues that are in Farmington all around, we are proposing an additional 1.0 school psychologist at the high school to help with some of these issues, to address the students at risk, also to conduct comprehensive evaluations. Right now, we have one school psychologist at the high school for 1,300 students, and the recommendation from the National Association of School Psychologists is one psychologist for 700. So, the addition of the second psychologist will really put us really where we should be and to help with some of these other issues. And I have to say, our high school, current high school, school psychologist is a warrior. I don't know how she does it, but she does it, so. Our collaborative preschool program. So, we have an SLC preschool program at West District, and that, again, is for students with autism, and it's attached to our other SLC, which is already there. They do some collaborative work together. We also have the collaborative preschool program at NOAA. And we have seen an increase in the number of preschool students with IEPs over the last few years. We have higher and higher numbers. And again, you can see the increase over the last few years of students coming into the district with IEPs. Many of the students with significant needs, too. So, because of this increase, we are asking for an additional 1.0 preschool teacher to provide instruction at Noah Wallace. And this would be a special education preschool teacher to help us to be able to educate these students. And again, the more we do with early intervention, the better chance that children are going to do better later, and hopefully, maybe not even need special ed eventually. We are the only state that identifies dyslexia as a separate category on an IEP, the only ones. So, that has, you know, it was a bit of a shock at first when it happened. I'd say the benefit of that is that it has forced us to really hone in our skills on identifying dyslexia, as opposed to a general reading disability, and then to really understand, you know, how to intervene. So, we have had an increase in the number of students identified, and an increase in the number of students requiring specialized instruction in the areas of decoding and phonemic skills. So, this chart just shows the overall increase in prevalence of students with specific learning disabilities. You can see it's been eking up in our population. But this is how many students now have been identified with dyslexia. So, prior to 2016, we didn't identify that separately. But as you can see, that number has really gone up. And these are students that really require very specific programming in order to, you know, move ahead in their reading skills. So, we are proposing in this budget an addition of a half-time reading teacher to address the specific needs of these students who struggle. And also additionally, we are asking for a half-time special ed teacher due to the increase in identified students. And the second position would be more assigned according to need. So, what happens now is, you know, we put our budget together, and there's so many moving parts that happen between now and next year. And just as we have unassigned regular ed teachers, looking at, you know, where will kids be, it would be the same principle, that it would be assigned according to need. So, these are our overall proposed certified budget requests. Again, the full-time school psychologist at the high school, special ed preschool teacher, which is also full-time, the half-time specialized reading teacher, and the half-time special ed teacher to be assigned. So, that would be an increase of three certified FTEs. And then, lastly, just to look at some of our other budget drivers and other, you know, things we're proposing. So, you've got the increase of the, we're going to ask for an increase of 1.86 non-certified paraprofessionals. Again, it's hard to anticipate what I'm going to need in a year. This gives us that room, so we have a little extra in the budget to assign those. The reduction of the .93 non-certified job coach. And I do want to address some of these other lines. So, in consultations, it looks like, ooh, a quarter of a million dollar increase. We've been funding more than that at times over the years, but it was never properly funded in the line. So, we would have unpredictable things happen, we'd have to have consultations, and we were pulling from other places. So, this is really a desire to, let's fund the line appropriately, let's put into that line what we really need. So, that's the number that we think we need. Right now, those would be the tuition increases, $63,000 for public, $30,000 for private. Again, you know, that will move many times before next year. And a summer school increase of $58,000, and that really is also due to the increase in the number of students we have that require summer services. And I'm sure you don't have any questions. Bill?
How much of your funding is predicated on federal grant money, in terms of your overall budget? Do you see it flatlined or increasing?
Our IDEA grants?
Yeah. Well, right.
It goes up a little each year, but not a lot.
Are you hearing anything in your industry, for lack of a better word?
There's some talk now that there's going to fund it, there's better funding coming, but hasn't happened yet. But there is, you know, I have read some things, I've heard some things, that we might get better funding from the federal government, but not yet. Yeah, we hope so.
The consultations line, is that, are you talking about nursing? Is that like, are you, what are the consultations? Is that the line that's the, when you have to hire consultants, or like, what do you, what line is that?
So, we have some students that we've had to hire specific consultants for in order to offer them specific services. The Center for Children with Special Needs is one group that we use for consultation. We've had to pay, we've had to pay for some specific groups that do work with kids with dyslexia. Our hope over time is that, once we have this position in place with this person here, that we'll be able to do that, that's our own person, we'll be able to reduce that line over time in that area. But sometimes, things come up that, again, are unanticipated, that we need to engage consultant, maybe in order to keep a kid in district, too. But it's, we're not talking about nursing.
So, that's just a broad, like, consultant line for, okay. Okay.
Outside evaluation.
Right. Outside evalu, okay.
Yes.
All right.
And that's outside evaluations. We have actually come down with the number we're doing in some areas, but what's risen recently is, we've had some kids that we've had to do outside risk assessments and paid for because of the nature of what's happening with them. So, it's kind of shifted that way.
I did have a question about, so I understand the need for the psychologist at the high school. Are the other psychologists fully, is everything okay?
Are, are the other psychologists fully, is everything okay with the FTEs for the other psychologists?
Well, I mean, we, I'd say so we're in much better shape than we were. I mean, we've continually upped the psychologist over the last few years, and the high school was really the spot that I was the most concerned about now.
I mean, how's our ratio for the other psychologists?
It's the same recommended ratio, so it's supposed to be one for 700 to 750. So, we have, we have a full time person at IAR, we have a full time person at Westwood.
We're okay with everywhere else. It was just the high school that was off the ratio. Okay.
Yeah, the psychologists.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else right now. Thanks. Can I ask a question?
I know sometimes these topics are a little difficult to get through without being very specific, but you just said something about, like, an outside risk assessment. So, at what point is it the, the family's responsibility versus the district's responsibility? For, like, an outside risk assessment, wouldn't that fall more towards the family's responsibility?
Well, where it's under our responsibility is that we have to know if it's safe to have a student with us. And what's, what is recommended. So, sometimes we'll, we'll do one, and the person will say, you know, yes, they can be in your district, but these are the supports that they would need in order to be safe. So, in certain situations, it's really more prudent to have an outside person do it than to do it ourselves. So, yeah.
I get it, I just didn't understand it. I, I'm not questioning the legitimacy of it, I'm just trying to understand. I mean, essentially, we have to decide at some point, like, are we providers or are we educators? And, and the line is very gray in a lot of the scenarios because of exactly what you just described.
Well, I mean, we want to be sure. I mean, again, I think one of the things I've loved about being here is the philosophy of, of really stretching to, because I, I do believe that we want all kids, if possible, to be here and to access their education. But we have to make sure we're safe and that the student is safe, and that we're doing right by them. So, sometimes it's best to have a person, a neutral party who's not in the middle of it, to take a look and see, and then to help us make the determination, and then to help the family with that as well. So, thank you.
It would seem to me that that actually is aligned with our goal of equity. In the sense that you want to make sure that kids that are not special ed identified, that are in a classroom with a kid that is special ed identified, that they're able to access their education as well. Right? Without being distracted in a meaningful way. So, that's, that serves the dual purpose of helping the child in distress, but also working with the kids that are just normal kids in the classroom, as you say, not identified, I don't say normal, not identified kids in the classroom, be able to be taught and engage in their, you know, normal daily activity.
And you know what, what's interesting is, I would say, we were looking at the number of risk assessments we've done, and more have been done on gen ed kids than special ed kids. Yeah. So, it's like, it's, it's just a global problem. Yeah, a lot of stress.
Lori, those non-certified job coach in Paris, is that something, would, so would we consider those sort of unassigned positions? Or, because I don't remember doing that before. They're also interesting percentage of FTEs, so could you just?
Yes, I would say they're unassigned. Just, you know, it's hard when you, like, like, as of today, I can tell you exactly how many people we have here, and then banking on that to be true in September, right? You don't know. And, and when we look at our trends and we look at the increase in students with needs, it sort of seems prudent to have those positions sort of aside. So, if you need them, they're budgeted for instead of having to come back and say, oh, we, you know, we don't have those.
They're actually two full time.
Yeah, the numbers kind of, are the way we. Paris, that's how, it's.
It's not exactly the same way you would do it with teachers. We're just trying to put a number to it.
Your .86 of the day. So, yes, it would be two, two full time paraprofessional positions.
Kristi?
Hi. So, I, I notice, you know, there's the increase for the IEPs, our students that needing an IEP for the preschool program. Now, is that, are we seeing a lot of increase for all ages as well, or that you're just seeing that specific to the preschool?
We're seeing a creep up across the board, but we're seeing a bigger surge at the preschool level, I would say. And it's just numbers of either people moving in with students that, you know, require special education, or we, it's, and then I was actually speaking to some colleagues in the valley, and they're, they're seeing the same pattern, just a big bump up in the number of kids requiring, not just itinerant services, but a program for preschool.
Right, exactly. Well, because I, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm glad that we're addressing the need for, you know, more student, or more teachers in that area, but I just want to make sure that we're addressing the need in the older grades as well. If we're seeing that increase, I mean, is this all, we, we just need somebody in preschool? We don't need more for the other students that we're, I mean, if, if all those numbers are increasing, you know, all the way up through the high school, there isn't more of a need for the older grades, or, I mean?
Well, I think right now, I mean, we are, you know, we're pretty well staffed. But, you know, we're watching it for the future. I mean, I'm hoping at some point, things start to level. I think we all are hoping at some, you know, this percentage can't go on forever. But, yeah, I mean, our, if you look at our caseloads in this district, they're pretty good. You know, if you compare them out to other districts, they're, they're actually, you know, doable, it's.
It's a lot of work on our special ed teachers.
It is.
I just want to make sure that they're, you know, that they have everything that they need, if, if they need more, if we're just providing for preschool, but if we're seeing those numbers going up in the older grades as well.
Well, one of the things, and that was why we looked, you know, for that additional half time special education teacher to add. Sometimes what happens is you get a glut at a building, you know, so that would help us to address that. So, we're projecting, looking right now, next year, which buildings that may be at. Now, those numbers can change, too, because one, it was two summers ago, we had a lot of people move in, and they seemed to hit one building with IEPs, and you don't know if that's going to happen. But, you know, we have some grades with just more identified students, so we watch as that goes up, and that would be how we would choose, I guess, where that person might be.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions for Lori?
Well, thank you for your continued support of students with special needs, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, next item on the agenda, item six, D, Preliminary Professional Staffing Budget.
Yes. So, it's nice to follow Lori because we're talking about many of the same things, and we work so well together to collaborate and think about our staffing needs for next year. So, some of what Lori just presented is included in my report as well. This is an annual report that gives you an advanced look of, at what you'll see in the superintendent's budget this coming weekend. And on the first page, I've provided you with a preview of the major budget drivers for the 2021 budget, and a description of those drivers as they relate to professional staffing. I'd say it might be easiest if we were to look together at the chart on the fourth page of the report, which is organized by those same three drivers. Academic Excellence and Equity, Social Emotional Learning and Support, and Flexible Pathways for Challenge and Support. You can see that the overall total proposed staffing is an increase of 1.7 FTEs with an additional 2.0 teachers set aside to address volatile enrollment in the elementary grades, which is something we do every year. And I'll say more about that in a minute. First and foremost, these proposals do address academic excellence and equitable learning opportunities for all students. These recommendations adhere to the board's policies and regulations for class size. We always monitor class size very carefully. And these two teachers that are included here are not yet assigned to a particular school, because typically, we experience unpredictable enrollment shifts later in the spring or summer. And we only assign those teachers once we have confidence that a particular school and grade is going to need an additional teacher to maintain reasonable class sizes. So, going down the list, at this point, the projected enrollment at East Farms is indicating a need for one additional classroom teacher. And of course, I think, as Kathy mentioned, that enrollment could rise, which is a good example of how we might then use those unassigned teachers or non-deployed teachers later in the year to address that enrollment rise. At Westwoods, enrollment is projected to decrease slightly, and so we are budgeting for one less teacher than we have now. But again, we monitor class sizes here, and, and we'll make adjustments as needed and, and keep you informed. As Lori said, due to an increase in our enrollment in mandated programming for preschool children, we will need an additional teacher for our collaborative preschool here at Noah Wallace. Next, the increase in special areas teachers for East Farms School is aligned to their growing enrollment. Currently, we have 1.2 teachers for each of the special areas of music, art, PE, and library. And next year, they are going to need 1.4 in each of these areas. However, with some very careful analysis and thinking about efficiencies across the district, we are able to increase only .4 instead of .8 to cover all of these classes. I'll give you an example, and, and you see it below. The art faculty at IAR has in the past supported East Farms programming across the street, and we will be asking them to do that again this year to, to help out with this enrollment increase. So, therefore, you see some adjustments both at Westwoods and IAR that really will not impact programming for students in those schools. It's adjustments that can be managed in, in terms of enrollment, and therefore, would help to support East Farms without an additional .8. It'll just be an additional .4. The World Language Program at IAR has had staffing built into their FTEs in the past to support students with a wide range of Spanish proficiency entering grade seven. So, our resource teacher has had, you know, .4 in his schedule designated to support those students in particular. And with the acceleration of our, not acceleration, but the advancement of our elementary program, we see less of a need for that, and so we're able to reduce that support by .2 at IAR this coming year. The .3 Aspire request for staffing is in alignment with a new graduation policy that's beginning with our current freshman class, the class of 2023. In that class, all students will need to demonstrate success in a capstone class or a class like capstone that the high school has been developing and has decided to call it Aspire. And Aspire stands for Ambitious Self-Directed Personalized Interdisciplinary Reflective Exhibition of Learning. And they are growing their slate of courses that will qualify to be Aspire courses, much in the same way that we have capstone classes. And so, this .3 is there to begin real implementation of those graduation requirements. I know Dr. Hurwitz will come and speak more about this on Monday next week. But we will be implementing three Aspire courses next year, and then you'll see in years following, likely more, a greater need for FTEs related to the Aspire program As we do every year, we always take a close look at all staffing at the high school in conjunction with the class size report, which really reflects student interest in classes, the way in which we can shift where capstone classes are taught, and the number of sections per course that we need. And so, we're confident that we will be able to reduce by a 1.2 FTE at the high school, really thinking about priorities. And as Lori said, it's the high school's priority this year to be able to achieve an additional school psychologist. And through some, you know, careful analysis and looking at who we have on staff that is, you know, perhaps part time, we're able to make those reductions. And I will be able to come to you with the specifics of where those reductions will be taken a, a bit later in the budget process. We're still kind of figuring that out specifically at the moment, but we're confident that we'll be able to reduce by 1.2. And so, in the second budget driver category of social emotional learning, you again see the addition of a school psychologist to meet the increased needs for mental health support and diagnosis and intervention. And then a very slight increase in counseling to that department, which is offset by the reduction of a job coach at the high school in terms of budget. And finally, in the area of flexible pathways for challenge and support, this .5 reading teacher position, we're intending it to be combined with an existing half time reading position that would allow us to hire a full time, highly specialized, highly trained, expert reading teacher who can not only deliver direct specialized service to students, but also really work closely with special education teachers in elevating their skillset and their ability to really think about the needs of children who may be diagnosed with dyslexia needs or other very specialized reading needs. This would be someone who could then, you know, work across all of the elementary schools and really sit side by side with a teacher and offer coaching support, modeling, as well as direct support to students. And we really see this as a, an urgent need, given the data that we're looking at in terms of our reading achievement. And finally, the half time special education teacher, also in sort of the category of not yet assigned to a school to respond to increased need. So, that is really an overview of all of what you will see in the upcoming budget. I would be able to provide you on Saturday with a final report that includes more of a school by school look at increases and decreases and class sizes at each of the elementary schools to kind of round out the picture for you. So, you can expect to see that on Saturday.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
Oh, Kim, I don't know if this is actually the right time, but I know there's been a lot of interest over the past couple of years, it's for American Sign Language and finding a teacher.
Right.
How's that going?
It's not going, it's not going very well. It's really, you know, just having a .2 in the budget is proving to be extra challenging. It's hard to find a person who's certified to start with, and then someone who would want to be at the high school every day, five days a week, for an hour, is, is a challenge. And we did reach out and try to collaborate with Avon. It's looking as though their programming, they're not sure what they're going to do with their programming, so it's very tentative. The other option we are going to consider and to look more closely at is more of an online option, which is being implemented right now in Canton. And when I spoke with the Assistant Superintendent in Canton, he had rave reviews for the way students are able to access that programming. And it might be a way for us to start and build interest so that in the future, we could staff those classes at a higher level and therefore attract, you know, a teacher who would want to have, you know, a more significant position than just a .2.
Any other questions for Kim?
Kim, I'm trying to visualize the, under the academic excellence, the .2 in art and world language at Irving Robbins. So, so this will, they will be at, there will be East Farms students, maybe about 20 of them crossing the street to Irving Robbins once.
No, 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 the teacher will cross the street to East Farms.
I'm good now.
A little better.
You didn't see the capital improvement for the bridge?
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item on the agenda, item six E, NIESC letter status update.
So, we're including a letter from NIESC, it's a response to a report that we had to complete due to our warning status on one standard of seven standards that are assessed. We have five years until our next NIESC visit, believe it or not, but we do have to report more often to NIESC because we are on warning status in that one standard. NIESC, in summary, the, the letter says that NIESC is pleased that a statement of needs was approved by the Board of Ed and Town Council, and they are pleased that we have a building committee for a renovation or replacement plan with an owner's representative and architects addressing ADA issues. We must report again on March 1st of this year for our five-year progress report. In, in this letter, it does talk about inadequate progress to complete valid recommendations with a request for additional progress reports or a downgrading of the school's accredited status. So, any significant changes to programming at the high school or the facility where, you know, there are issues and it's impacting learning, would have to be reported within 60 days, and I would like to remind everyone that NIESC is not just citing us for ADA compliance, they are citing us for a facility that is impacting programming for our students, and that we are not able to provide all the programming that we would want to provide to our students because we have limited classrooms. We already, in the report, it talks about utilizing 95% of the classrooms throughout the day, that's a very high percentage, you know, some high schools, a teacher actually gets one classroom all day. Not our high school, multiple teachers use classrooms all day to maximize the use. We have an excellent program of studies, and we're always looking to expand and find ways to do that in efficient ways, but, um, you know, I just wanted to share this with the board so that you were aware of that letter, and I know it was sent, but I think also the community should be aware of this letter, and that we have to report pretty regularly to NIESC to talk about the progress we're making when it comes to addressing the issues with the FHS facility.
Hey, everyone else set? Next item on the agenda, item six F, engaged learning update.
Going to be very quick, I just have to thank Scott's Townline Mobile in Farmington, they annually, this family annually applies for a grant for us, and they come to us and present that grant, and we're just so appreciative of their support, and this is Deb and Scott Sosie, for, you know, this is many, many years, they just always remember us every year, and it really does make a difference. Westwood's, West District, East Farms, and Union highlighted inspiring learning experiences that took place across all schools to honor Martin Luther King, and I encourage all of you to read through, you know, the, the different learning experiences, they're really amazing. All schools engaged in learning tasks and learning experiences relative to Martin Luther King Day. IAR shared several engaged learning updates, from socially constructed learning in mathematics to South Asian Day, learning opportunities to empowered learning and writing. You can take a look through all those exciting updates.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, item six G, professional appointments, retirements, and resignations, I don't see any. Item seven, unfinished business, but, budget impact, budget update.
It's me. I feel like a broken record, but I think, you know, you heard this story today through Lori's presentation, and it's been the same that we've been, that I've been sharing this entire year, but unfortunately, the challenges that we're facing in our current budget, our 2019-2020 budget, and the overages that we have, have a direct impact on what we're proposing for the 2020-21, 2021 budget. And you heard some examples today, you know, the, the graphs that Lori showed with risk assessments and increased needs in preschool, our East Farms enrollment, those all continue to be drivers of our budget currently, as well as will be impacting what we're proposing for next year. Any questions? Okay.
Set, thanks, Alicia. Uh, next item, hm, next item on the agenda, item seven B, approval of central office educational specification, second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, item seven C, approval of Farmington High School education, educational specification, second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions, thank you. Uh, item eight, new business. Any new business?
Financial. No, no, business administrator, sorry, assistant superintendent of finance, sorry. No new business.
Item nine, consideration of assistant superintendent of finance and operation report. Can I get a motion for approval of the financial report dated December 2019?
Motion.
Discussion? Oh, thank you. Discussion? Did you want to discuss it? No, it's okay.
I would just say, again, I feel like I sound like a broken record, but, um, you'll see in the monthly insurance financials that each month, we're consistently higher than we're expected, or we expected the trends to be. We have an upcoming meeting with Cigna's Total Health Insights Claim Utilization Team to review, do a deep dive in the last 12 months of our claims, and analyze trends, and try to make some recommendations going forward. So, continuing to look at it closely, but.
I would just make a comment that.
Sure.
You guys are doing a nice job of, of really moving things around, given the deficit in the services account is being so large, and we're only in January, the deficit is the December statement, so to be able to, so, you know, I know what you're trying to do, and you're doing everything you can, so, as they say, it's like a MacGyver kind of effort.
Thank, yeah, thanks. We're definitely working hard, but it seems, it seems, a very, very collaborative approach.
Very well done.
So, a lot of what we're doing now is directly impacting what we'll be sharing with you on Saturday, so.
For sure.
Thanks.
All right, thanks, Alicia. All right, I'm number 10, uh, oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item 10, report, report of board chair. I just want to thank everyone for getting in their committee charges and liaison preferences in so quickly. It was, I was really, it was nice to see we have a lot of different interests and talents on the board, so it was like a puzzle, putting it together, I'm going to pass out the assignments, and I, I just want to thank you all for your, your service and commitment to these committees. Mary's already, I believe, sent out the, the memos, so you'll be getting on the emails, and we'll go from there. I think Liz has already been to a meeting, the Public School Foundation, so we're, we're.
I got an email, and it said, you have a meeting tomorrow.
If you all haven't, Mary can get you your badges, hopefully everyone's.
I should have, I delivered them today, so hopefully everyone has one.
I don't, I don't have one either.
But I just sent her the picture, so.
Okay. I didn't get anything about a picture, so that may be why I don't have one, so I'll call her tomorrow and just see.
She has a picture of me, but.
Did you get a badge yet?
No.
Did you simply say the badge is invaluable? You know, for getting around the schools, because what happens.
We're going to add some value to it too in a moment.
Right, but because, like, for example, when I go to the school, drop off something for the nurse, you know, they have to have someone escort you, so it gives them a lot of a break having to bring someone out, so, you know, it helps the staff out, so it's not just you kind of big-timing with a badge, it actually provides a service, it provides a service to the staff.
And everybody got their official name plate today.
Yeah.
So, Christine, you did not get a badge?
Correct, but I didn't get anything about a photo either.
Ellen sent the email.
You never had a badge?
No, Mary did.
Never sent it.
Yeah. Sylvie, did you get one?
She has a badge, yeah.
I don't have a badge.
Did you, did you ask Mary?
No, I got one.
Okay, did you ask, did you ask Mary or send in an email?
I sent a picture, yeah.
You did.
I just sent mine, though.
You just sent yours, so we need Christine.
I can give Mary a call in the morning.
Okay. All right, so, and also with the, we're going to be able to use the, our badges for complimentary admission to Farmington High School Athletic Games, so.
Home game.
Home games, home games, right. Just some upcoming board dates, this Saturday, we start our budget session on Saturday, so on 8:30, there'll be a light breakfast, we start at 9:00. It can be a long day, so feel free to, you know, come casual, it's Saturday. And then on Monday, February 3rd, our regular board meeting will continue with budget, hopefully vote on a budget. Hope everyone saw, we've canceled our February 4th board meeting, because that's the night, as Megan was saying, that the building committee is going to be presenting to the town council, so that also might be a good date to, to put on your calendars. Oh, and on Monday, the yearbook photo, could we get it, I need a clear date, because I have one email that we should be there at 6:30, and then I just got one for 6:15, and, um.
6:15 was the one I got, too.
Yeah, there's been some, because I don't think it really would take 45 minutes to take a photo, we say that all the time.
15 minutes, I know.
Can we say 6:30? Okay, so we'll just say 6:30 on, on Monday for yearbook photo. That's all I have.
We all, thank you for these boards.
Oh, you ruined, yes, oh, great. You ruined the.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah, so, no, I hope that we can all just show that we care about the environment and reduce some single-use plastics.
Um, I'm just wondering about the No Wallace Fund represented, because Mark was on that before.
I'm on it.
There is on it, and Beth's on it.
Anyone in District 1?
Communication about.
I've always, I've, I never.
You're automatically on it, right?
I've been.
I gave care, I gave care of the names, I think, of everyone in District 1.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Item number 11, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Adjourn, thank you, everybody.